There's a basketball came from the head line. What are you doing here?
Mayor Barney, I've been watching you closely and I think this is how we do this first part. I call the meeting to order. Did I do okay? Okay, thank you. This is my mentor over here. This is a special night and I do call this special meeting to order on behalf of the Gilbert Town Council, January 15, 2015. This first event tonight is related to what happens in America, one of the special events where individuals have been elected by the voice of the people and they have an opportunity to take an oath to defend the Constitution. And so, everything that can give you chills of the blessing of freedom can happen in the next few minutes and I hope it does for you. We will begin tonight with the special Gilbert Fire and Police Honor Guard presenting the colors. The National Anthem will then be played by Dan Taylor of our Gilbert Fire Department via the trumpet. Seven family members representing Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Ray will come forward. Seth Peterson, Levi Peterson, Benjamin Peterson, Thomas Ray, Ashley Ray, Clara Ray, and Dallin Ray. And when they come up, we'll have them just get in this vicinity and they'll face the flag on an angle and they'll know what to do at that point. And so, we now turn to our Gilbert Fire and Police Honor Guard to present the colors.
Ready? Clear the post? Post, post! All uniformed personnel. Please, man!
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready? Forward!
Thank you, may be seated. We invite Associate Pastor Father John from Saint Timothy Catholic Church to come forward and offer an invocation.
Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through your authority is rightly, through you, authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. We pray for John Lewis, Mayor of this town, for his Vice Mayor Eddie Cook, and for the members of this council who are entrusted to guard our political welfare. May they be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. We pray to you, who are Lord and God, forever and ever.
We have some very special people here tonight, and it's all of you, and also seventeen, what we call dignitaries for various reasons, and from a federal, state, county, local government order, I invite the following seventeen people if they are here, and there are two still on their way here, but as I say your name, if you could please stand and be recognized. Representing Senator Jeff Lake's office, Buchanan Davis. Representing Congressman Matt Salmon's office, Chuck Gray. John McHatten. Cesar Ubarra. State Representative J.D. Messnard. And I'm going to say it anyway, I'll remain standing. State Representative Warren Peterson will be here shortly. Maricopa County Board of Supervisor and the Chair this year, Steve Truchery. Representing the City of Chandler, Vice Mayor Kevin Harkey. City, Chandler City Council Members. Councilmember Nora Allen. Renee Lopez. Terry Rowe. Representing the City of Mesa. Councilmember Kevin Thompson. Representing the Town of Queen Creek. Mayor Gail Barney. Councilmembers Don Olfant, Robin Benning, Melina Turley, and also Queen Creek Town Manager John Cross. Please join me in giving the individuals who are standing a nice, warm Gilbert welcome. Thank you. Vice Mayor Eddie Cook, if you could please come forward. As you have done so well, standing to my right is my right hand, I'll put you right here. On behalf of Mayor John Lewis and the Town Council, and twelve hundred Gilbert team members, and two hundred and forty thousand Gilbert residents, I present to you the official recognition with your name on a pen. And it's a thank you pen. And if all of you who are here could join me in giving Vice Mayor Cook a nice big round of applause and appreciation for his service for the last twelve months as the Vice Mayor, please do so. And you could remain here while I also invite up Councilmember Victor Peterson. Council-elect, and we're about to change that, Bridget Peterson. And Councilmember Jordan Ray. To the four of you, I present a certificate of election. And it is signed by the mayor and the deputy clerk. And then, it's also the citizens of our great Gilbert community that have certified this. So, I'll pass this out to each of you. And I'll have you look over and make sure you think it's an official document. Take a look at it. If I get the nod or eye from all four of you, okay, here's the last part of making this really official. Could you join me as these four stand to my right, who have taken that courageous leadership step to say they will represent you and our town of Gilbert and our region and our state, in giving them a nice big round of applause? Presiding Judge John Hudson, if you could please come forward. This is the part that I mentioned earlier, just gives me that inside excitement of appreciation to live in the United States of America. And we turn to the judge.
Okay, if you all turn and face me, and I'm left-handed, so now I have to switch. And I want you to raise your right hands, and you're going to repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of the State of Arizona. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of the Town Council. According to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
To the four of you, it's time to get to work. I invite the four of you to join me on the dais along with Councilmember Daniels, Councilmember Taylor, and then I think that puts us all up there as a team. And to our Presiding Judge Hudson, the oath of office certificates. Should we have you sign them right now while you're here?
I'm staying.
Okay. Well, come on down, we're going to get some business going here. There's a pen, and let's just take care of that right now. Let's make it official. Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember Daniels, this is a pretty good-looking group, what do you think?
Here, here.
First item of business, roll call. Return to our Deputy Clerk, Elise Maxwell, to please conduct the roll call.
Mayor John Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. First item of business for this new council. I will entertain a motion to approve a resolution of appreciation for former Councilmember Ben Cooper. Is there a motion?
Sound moved.
Why don't we take that as a motion and a second? And let's do a voice vote on that. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. I'll see you in a couple of minutes. Ben Cooper, if you could please come forward. I think it would be fitting to have the family join you. Could the Cooper family please come up here? And I'm going to stick with still saying the phrase Councilmember Cooper because this is an individual that I have grown to appreciate, admire, and I thank him tonight and his family for their sacrifice in allowing a dad and a husband to serve. And I'm going to first present this resolution that was just approved. And in order to do so, I need to put on my reading glasses, so Ben, if you could just help me hold that for a second. This is Resolution Number 3775. Whereas Ben Cooper has served as a council member since May 22, 2010, including serving as Vice Mayor during his tenure, and whereas Ben Cooper has served with honor and distinction throughout his tenure, and whereas his influence has always been exercised with utmost concern, that the cares and concerns of stakeholders were carefully considered before decision was reached, and whereas Ben Cooper served as council liaison to numerous boards and commissions providing a crucial link between citizen advisory boards and the council, and whereas he has been an advocate in the creation and designation of an arts, culture, and entertainment district in downtown heritage district to provide the best possible quality of life for the citizens of Gilbert, and whereas he has carried out the duties of public office honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and courageous leadership. Now therefore, be resolved that the Town Council on behalf of the citizens of the town of Gilbert hereby express sincere appreciation to Ben Cooper for his service to the town as member of the council, passed and adopted by the common council of the town of Gilbert this fifteenth day of January 2015. Please join me in a round of applause for Councilmember Ben Cooper. So, to Councilmember Cooper, a nice gavel with some information on it, they'll appreciate. And then I, you get to decide, do you want to open this now or later at home? Okay, let's do it. It's heavy. Look at that, you're opening presents, this is great, isn't it? Oh, you know, it's in a box. So, all right, I'll just give it away. The official town seal, which is on display over to my right, and it's on our town pins that many of us wear, and so that is what's in that box, but thank you. We are going to ask Councilmember Cooper if he had any comments he would like to share at this point.
Patrick, if you'd put twenty-seven minutes on the clock. Mayor, thank you very much, council. I appreciate this recognition tonight, and it's just a real honor to be with you and to have had the opportunity to serve Gilbert for the last almost five years. I was going to say today's another great day in Gilbert. It might be the best one in almost five years. But it really has been an honor to serve, and I really have appreciated it. Let me be the first to congratulate our new council. And Councilmember Peterson, you've got a great team to work with, and obviously you know this is a wonderful community, and you will do great things together as a council. So, let me be the first to congratulate you. Thoughts on a moment like this? There's a lot of them. You know, it really comes down to the desire that I had the last few years was to continue a legacy of service that started, at least here in Gilbert, back in 1983 when my father was appointed as the Town Manager. And I saw how much he loved this community and how much effort he put into it with many other wonderful leaders, and that inspired me and has given me the desire to serve. And so, I know that we as a council and leaders of this community have stood on the shoulders of many wonderful leaders that have turned this community into what it is today. And so, when we started the term, you know, my kind of motto was to keep Gilbert great. And like any good Boy Scout who tries to leave the campsite a little bit better than he found it, or maybe even a lot better, we had a daunting task to take a wonderful community and try to build upon it. And I think we have. We've done probably too many things to name here tonight, but it's just, it's been a blessing to serve. And so, an expression of gratitude is definitely warranted here. I have loved the opportunity to serve alongside you, Mayor, someone I've known for, well, as long as we've both been here in Gilbert. And I've appreciated rubbing shoulders with you and learning from you. And that admiration and respect that I have for you is also felt for the other members of the council and the other elected officials that have been partners with Gilbert. And so, I appreciate, appreciate you, and I appreciate everyone within the community that has lent us support. I appreciate the voters for their, the way they've inspired me and others to serve and the shared vision that we've had, and I, and just, it's been, that's been one of the greatest things about serving was getting to know so many Gilbert residents. I couldn't sit down without also thanking the staff of this great community, all twelve hundred of them. They really make a difference and make this community stand out around the country. And it's been my pleasure to work with our staff and to support them and to do my best to work alongside them in making this the greatest community that it can be. Finally, of course, we've got this wonderful family here, my loving wife, who's been as supportive as anyone can be with a husband that's gone a lot, and I appreciate her and these sweet, beautiful daughters. I'm going to relearn their names. I'm going to get to see where their rooms are in the house and all sorts of wonderful things. No, but it's been a blessing. They've been a great support to me. And so, I end this, these brief remarks with a thank you to them and an expression of my love to each of you and to this great community, and end it there with a big thank you. Thank you very much.
So Ben, it has been, it's thirty years, and your dad had a big influence on me too, and it was in high, when Ben was in high school, that I have some great memories of seeing you and watching you in leadership roles even thirty years ago, so thank you. One more big round of applause for the Cooper family. You notice, Ben, I'm not going to have you back in that high school memory mode when you sang for the Community Roadshow, Man of La Mancha. Notice, I didn't ask you to do that, but those are great memories. Next on the agenda, the four individuals who took an oath tonight, we're going to ask each to share some comments. And as listed on the agenda, we'll start with Vice Mayor Eddie Cook. And then we'll go to Councilmember Victor Peterson, Councilmember Bridget Peterson, and Councilmember Jordan Ray.
I first want to say that all that I do, I do in the glory of God, and without his support, his wisdom, and his guidance for me, I would not be here, and I give him full thanks tonight. Secondly, I could not have done this without my wonderful best friend and my wife and her support for these last three and a half years, and then to once again allow me to do this for another four years. So, I thank you, and I have a gift for you, if you can come up here. The community also thanks you for allowing me to serve in so many different ways, and I can't thank you enough for allowing me to do this, and I love you. I cannot express my gratitude, as Councilmember Cooper mentioned. There are so many wonderful individuals in our community, so many wonderful businesses that have allowed us to provide a vision and guide our community to the future and our legacy here in Gilbert. And I cannot express my sincere gratitude for all of you for allowing me to participate in this process. It is a journey that was never on my short-term or long-term plans, but I can only say to you that it has been a complete joy in my life. It's been just a wonderful journey to meet so many, so many wonderful faith-filled individuals here in our community, and I could not be more excited and proud to be a Gilbertonian as we, is that the right term? That we have selected in our community, and I look forward to serving you with a hundred percent commitment of my time and my energies for the next four years. And again, my sincere gratitude and thank you for this.
Eddie, you're making me look bad with those roses, man. Actually, I'm hoping the trip I just took my wife on will serve as some kind of a token of gratitude, but at any rate, I want to express my gratitude, and I want to just say how humbled I've been by the support of so many wonderful people I've interacted with over the last few years and certainly on the campaign trail as well. Obviously, I would not be here without them. And I certainly would not be able to do this work without my family's support, and I just have to thank them. Of course, they're the most precious in my life. I especially want to recognize the unfailing loyalty of my sweet wife. Certainly couldn't do anything without her. I want to say that I believe Gilbert is truly exceptional. The good people of Gilbert make it exceptional, and it is a great opportunity to be a part, small part, of the bright future that I think is ahead of us. I'm very honored to serve in this kind of capacity. I recognize that it is a sacred trust that is placed in us as we serve the people. I also recognize that it is really their power that we wield, and it's by their consent. As I recently visited Independence Hall, I was reminded of this, and as it, that is the place where the Declaration of Independence was signed, which that document in referring to the natural rights that are endowed to us by our Creator says that to that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That same document also says all men are created equal. A common phrase of the day was equal and independent. In other words, no one has a natural right to rule over anyone else. Which leads us right back to the fact that we serve here only with the consent of the people and only to protect their rights. As a praying man, I pray constantly to fulfill that sacred duty. And tonight, I solemnly recommit myself to that purpose.
Thank you. As I sit here before you, twenty years after my family and I chose Gilbert to be our new home, I am humbled and honored by the support I've received from friends. Some I've known for a long time and some I've made much more recently, especially during the campaign. I could never list by name all the people who have served as such a positive influence for me over the years. But there are a few groups I would like to acknowledge. The Congress of Neighborhoods Planning Committee, filled with dedicated residents, town staff, elected officials, and community partners that led me to the Gilbert Leadership Program and being a member of Class Eight. During that nine-month program, I learned as much about myself as I did about Gilbert. And a classmate then encouraged me to apply for the Gilbert Planning Commission, where I was honored to serve for fourteen years. I want to thank every person that has worked for the Gilbert Planning Department and our attorneys because they each taught me something during our time together, no matter how long or how short we had. And every member of the Planning Commission I've served with, I've learned so much from the different perspective each person brought to the dais. Two and a half years ago, I decided to apply for the Gilbert Leadership Board of Directors. And being back involved in that program gave me a whole new look at Gilbert. And that's when I decided to run for Town Council. I'd like to say that I look forward to serving the town that I care so much for and am proud to call home in this new role. And I'm excited for these next four years. And I will live up to the commitment this position requires. I look forward to working with Mayor Lewis and my fellow council members and more importantly, the residents of Gilbert. I want to add that thanks to technology tonight, I believe my in-laws Nancy and Bruce are able to watch us from Illinois. My sister Jamie and my soon-to-be brother-in-law are able to watch us from Atlanta. And I think I have friends watching from a few states and my hometown of Marlboro, Massachusetts. And last but not least, my most important supporters. I thank my daughter Jen for her help and patience during the campaign and election. I'm so proud of you and Mama loves you. To my husband Mark, I've been trying to think of what to say to you for weeks. He never batted an eye when I said I wanted to run for office. And he took on roles that he didn't want or like, such as campaign treasurer. I hope he knows how much I love him and appreciate him. You are my funny, fairy tale, power couple husband and my best friend.
I'm not sure I would have voted for her had I known I had to speak after her. It's an honor to be here tonight, to do this again. Thank you for those who are here tonight. I appreciate it. To the family and to the friends, thank you. It's, as council members, you you get a lot of recognition and praise and the opposite of praise for the different things that the town does. And we've been fortunate as a council to be a part of many great awards and things that people are talking about and the different things that were ranked, whether it's how safe we are, how great of a community it is to live in. And oftentimes, people come up to the council members and say, "Thank you for doing that. It's, you know, because of your leadership that this has happened." When in reality, we are just a small part of it. It's the twelve hundred and fifty or so employees, it's the two hundred and thirty thousand residents who make this such a great community. Thank you. To each of you, especially my wife and kids. It's an honor to serve. And I look forward to many great things over the next four years.
Next item on the agenda is to accept a nomination for the office of Vice Mayor. Many of you know that we have followed a tradition of allowing different council members to serve for about a year. And so tonight, as we begin a new council, we look to a possible change. And so Vice Mayor Cook, I'll turn to you first to start the process.
Well, Mayor, it has been first a joy to be part of a tradition and legacy. And as I move now into that history that has been once shared by Councilmember Daniels and Councilmember Cooper, I know what it takes to be the Vice Mayor. And you've led, for me, a great example. But, Mayor, it's been a privilege to be here to your right and do the many things that I see you do. Our community is very grateful to have you as Mayor. And it's been a privilege and an honor to be there next to you. With that, I nominate Councilmember Jordan Ray to the office of Vice Mayor.
Second.
With that motion and second, and let's go ahead and do a voice vote again. All in favor, say aye.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor, there ought to be opportunities for other nominations.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations that any of you would like to make? And is a voice vote okay?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. With that motion and second, all in favor of Councilmember Jordan Ray serving as Vice Mayor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I have that as a seven oh vote, assuming that Councilmember Ray also voted. And I, it sounded like you did, so. Thank you. Please join me in thanking Vice Mayor Eddie Cook for his service the past year and our new Vice Mayor, Jordan Ray. For the next fifteen minutes, as soon as I adjourn this meeting, we have a reception planned for all of you. But the reception is on behalf of five individuals. Former Councilmember Ben Cooper. And the four council members who have taken the oath tonight. And so to the five of you, the celebration continues. For the four of you, because Councilmember Cooper now has flexibility maybe to take his family out for dinner, shop Gilbert, and so forth. But for the four of you, if you could be back here in about thirteen minutes, and we will start a regular Town Council meeting at seven o'clock. This special session adjourned. Let the reception begin. Thank you.